Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order and we will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the city council. It is a responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendation on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning requests, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the City 2015 Land Use Plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pager. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening. I was just informed that the video, you couldn't see, Jeff tells me you heard the audio but didn't see the video. A couple of things that would have been a part of that presentation would be that if you're addressing the Planning Commission, come up to the front of the, come up to the podium, state your name and your address. And we would like, because we have a large crowd tonight, to limit the testimony anybody's providing tonight to five minutes. Our regular meetings are the first Wednesday of the month, but they do air not only live tonight on Channel 16, but the first Wednesday, or let's see, rebroadcast Saturday at 10:30 AM and Tuesdays at 7:00 PM. The first item of business tonight is to review and approve the consent agenda. I will run through that here as quickly as I can. The first item is the approval of the September 3, 2008 minutes of the regular meeting. Item number two would be the approval of Platts. Item number three would be the rezone from RS2 Residential District to the O Office District for allowed uses at 4709 South Louise Avenue. Item number four is a rezone from RS1 Residential District to the RA1 Residential District for allowed uses at 3900 South Terry Avenue. Item number five is a rezone Ag District and RS1 Residential District to RS2 Residential District for development of allowed uses at South Western Avenue and West Bitterroot Item number six is a rezone in the Platinum Valley Plan Development District to O Office, RS2 Residential, RD Residential, RA1 Residential, and RC Recreation and Conservation Districts to reflect existing uses at West 69th Street to West 85th Street, east and west of South Hughes Avenue. Item number seven is a rezone at Gateway Boulevard Plan Development District to RA2 Residential District to reflect existing use at West 41st Street and South Gateway Boulevard. Item number eight is a rezone in Suratoma Hills Plan Development District to RS2 Residential, RD Residential, RA1 Residential, and RC Recreation and Conservation Districts to reflect existing uses at West 57th and South Suratoma Avenue. Item number nine is a major amendment in Subarea A of Garden Valley Village Plan Development District to reduce the required side yard setbacks at West 77th Street and South Minnesota Avenue. Item 10 is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle sales and display at 2400 and 2404 West Madison Street. Item 11 is a conditional use permit in C3 Central Business District to allow on sale alcohol beverage establishment at 307 South Phillips Avenue. Item 12 is a conditional use permit in C4 Plan Commercial District to allow full-service restaurant within 100 foot of a residential use at 1601 South Sycamore Avenue. Item 13 is a conditional use permit in the I1 Light Industrial District to allow motor vehicle repair, assembly, and retail sales at 3916 North Potsdam Avenue. Item 14 is a conditional use permit in the O Office District to allow a daycare center at 401 West Lotta Street. Item 15 is a special use permit in Subarea E of Meadows on the River Plan Development District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment at 2320 South Louise Avenue. Item 16 is a special use permit in the Marion Place Plan Development District to allow full-service restaurant within 100 foot of a residential use at 1900 South Marion. Item 17 is a minor amendment in Subarea A of the Garden Village Plan Development District to reduce the side yard setback by five foot at West 77th Street and South Minnesota Avenue. Item 18 is a minor amendment in Subarea A of Garden Village Plan Development District to reduce the side yard setback by five feet at West 77th and South Minnesota Avenue. Item 19 is a minor amendment in Subarea A of the Garden Village Plan Development District to reduce the side yard setback by five foot at West 77th and South Minnesota Avenue. These are all different lots in the same development. Item 20 is a preliminary subdivision plan for Tower Park Edition in the RD Residential District to develop single-family residential lots at 6th Street and Cleveland. Item 21 is a preliminary subdivision plan for the Bend Edition in the C4 Plan Commercial District to allow development of commercial uses at the southwest corner of East 57th Street and Highway 11. Item 22 is a preliminary subdivision plan for the Falcon Heights Edition in the Falcon Heights Plan Development District to allow commercial and mixed-use development at the southwest corner of East 57th Street and Highway 11. Item 23 is a major amendment to a preliminary subdivision plan for Prairie Gardens Edition, Phase IV, at East 41st Street and South Sycamore Avenue. And then finally, item 24 is a preliminary subdivision plan in the RS2 Residential District for Prairie Hills East Edition, a residential development at South Western Avenue and West Bitterroot Street. Is there anyone in tonight's audience that wishes to move an item on the consent agenda to the regular agenda? Dave?
Mr. Chair, my name is Dave Loveland and I'll be representing planning staff tonight. I wanted to inform the commission that item 13 has been withdrawn by the applicant.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience?
Actually, if it was left on, we'd like to continue with this. We have another tenant for the building.
Steve? You need to come up to the podium.
My name is Steve Natsch, Professionals Group here in Townham, Broker/Associate. We withdrew item 13 and then I asked the staff if we could keep that on the agenda. We came tonight, we saw that it was on the agenda. If it so pleases you, we can keep it on the agenda. We have another tenant for the building. Same use.
Okay. Staff? Connie, did we send the check back?
Yes, we did.
Okay. We'll have to reapply for a different tenant. Okay. Sorry, Steve. Okay. Seeing no one else raise their hand, I would entertain commission action on the consent agenda with item 13 withdrawn.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
The consent agenda has been approved and if your item was one of those listed as a part of that agenda, you're free to leave. Okay, the regular agenda tonight begins with item 25. And I was told that we have a couple of items there that have changed status as well.
Yes. We have received requests on items 30 and 31 for deferral until the November Planning Commission meeting, which will be held on November 5. And on item 35, we have received a request from the applicant to withdraw.
Okay. Any questions for Dave regarding those three items?
30, 31 are deferred and 35 is withdrawn.
Okay. Is there Planning Commission action regarding the revised regular agenda?
I'll move for approval of the revised agenda with, revised regular agenda with items 30 and 31 deferred and item 35 withdrawn.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion regarding the regular agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Item 25, the first item on the regular agenda, is a future land use amendment allowing changes in future land uses to allocate additional commercial land uses at the southeast corner of South Minnesota Avenue and West 85th Street. City staff?
Yes, this, as you stated, this request is at the southeast corner of South Minnesota and West 85th Street. This land was annexed by the city council, by action at the city council meeting on September 15. The applicant is Steve Van Buskirk and the size of the parcel is 16.3 acres. They're asking for a commercial land use designation. The designation itself will line up with the property to the north that's already zoned commercial. And the lineal distance of the land requested to be designated commercial is generally in conformance with anticipated access points onto 85th Street. The southern boundary of the subject property is a designated right-of-way for future South Dakota Highway 100 and that effectively corners the subject in between three high-traffic roadways. At this time, there is no designated land use for this item and the applicant is requesting to assign that future land use for the first time. Sanitary sewer and water are available as long as the applicant continues to work with the city's Public Works Department. And access points onto adjacent roadways have been discussed with the city engineer. This site is not located within a regional watershed and a post-construction BMP will be required. Because the subject application accommodates future land uses and proposed developments should be consistent with the physical characteristics of the surrounding neighborhoods, staff recommends approval of this future land use amendment.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Good evening. Steve Van Buskirk, 5800 South Ramington Place. I could be answering any questions that you might have regarding what we're doing down there.
Any questions for Steve? Steve, I guess not. Thank you. Commission action? No, excuse me. Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to address this item? Seeing none. Commission action?
I make a motion to approve, excuse me, item number 25.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion regarding item 25? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, item 26 is a future land use amendment allowing changes in future land uses for the allocation of commercial, single-family residential, parks and open space land uses at the north side of East 69th Street between Sycamore and Highway 11. Staff report.
Yes, again, as you stated, this is on the north side of East 69th Street between Sycamore Avenue and South Dakota Highway 11. The applicant is Chuck, is Charles Point of Ronding Enterprise and the size of the parcel is 97 acres. Sanitary sewer and water service are available to the site. The applicant is responsible to participate in the east side sanitary sewer cost recovery program prior to the approval of any Platts. The applicant has provided for more intensive commercial land uses along the major roadways and single-family residential to the rear of the subject property in addition to approximately 20 acres of parks and open space. The integration of parks and open space land uses into residential neighborhoods is a primary goal of the 2015 comprehensive plan. Currently, the future land use again does not include the subject property, rendering it non-assigned, and with the availability of both sewer and water services to this area, it is appropriate to provide for future land use designations. The arterial street network will require improvement prior to development of the site and the applicant can request improvement as a development-driven street project, which will then be evaluated by the Public Works Department for necessity. A traffic impact study is required to be submitted as soon as possible to the engineering office and the study must be submitted prior to approval of construction plans. But because the subject application accommodates future land uses and is consistent with the physical characteristics of surrounding neighborhoods, staff is recommending approval of this request.
Any questions for Dave? Thanks, Dave. Is the petitioner here? Well... We typically do not take action on those items where the petitioner fails to appear, so I guess I would entertain a motion for deferral. Well, let me, yeah, we'll just go right to a motion for deferral.
I'll make a motion to defer item number 26.
Okay.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second to defer item 26 for 30 days. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Okay. Item 27 is a future land use amendment allowing changes in future land uses to allocate commercial office, multifamily, and single-family future land uses at East 41st Street and 6 Mile Road. Steve?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Steve Randall, representing planning staff on this item and other items this evening. This future land use amendment would be an addition of future land uses to allocate commercial office, multifamily, and single-family in the following quantities, which have been changed from your report to what's included in your addendum and is shown by exhibit on the screen. Basically, the commercial, office, institutional, multifamily, and single-family residential land uses are arranged in a conventional pattern of transition from the commercial into low-density residential. And according to the 2015 Growth Management Plan, this intersection of East 41st and 6 Mile Road is a potential location for neighborhood commercial services and is appropriate. The major street intersection also has three other corners, one of which is existing rural subdivision. We've had no calls from people who live in that area and the applicant is responsible for contacting them about their proposal. The appropriate locations then for other commercial development could be at the other two corners of this intersection, all three of which have some impact on the surrounding neighborhood, but it should be beneficial. The proposed location is probably the best of the three. A traffic impact study will be required with this future land use amendment to determine the impacts associated with the change in land use and potential rezoning, and the study is required to be submitted to engineering. Because the application accomplishes the future land use, or accommodates future land uses as described in the intent of the 2015 Growth Plan, and proposed developments should be consistent with physical characteristics of surrounding neighborhoods, staff recommends approval of this future land use amendment. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Is the petitioner here?
Good evening. Dave Driven, B&amp;D Engineers, 1100 East 26th Street, representing the petitioner, and just here to answer any questions you may have.
Other questions for Dave? I guess not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that wish, would like to address this item number 27? Okay. Seeing none. Commission action?
I'll move for approval of item 27.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Okay. Item 28 is another future land use amendment allowing changes in future land uses to reallocate future land uses from office to commercial at East 41st Street and South Dakota Highway 11. Dave?
Good evening again. The applicant is applying to essentially change the designated future land use from the office portion to a commercial portion. The size of the parcel is about six acres. That would change on the future land use map. The owner is Chuck Moss and the, as I stated, the request represents an increase in the commercial land use designation by about six acres. The access point onto East 41st Street has moved further to the east than originally anticipated and the applicant is proposing to line up the commercial land uses with that access point. The initial access point was at Grand Slam Avenue, which was where the original commercial and office intersected and that has been moved to Line Drive, which is where you see it right now. Improvements in this area to South Dakota 100 and East 41st Street are either underway in the case of East 41st Street or contained within the 2009-2013 capital improvement program in the case of South Dakota 100. Water and sanitary sewer are available and ready on-site and a traffic impact study has been conducted to determine the effects of the increased land use activity and some of that result was that they were needing to provide more right-of-way. That's also noted in the following petition, which is a rezoning application for the same land. And these construction plans must be submitted to the city engineer prior to construction. But because the subject application conforms to the proposed developments in the surrounding area, staff is recommending approval of this request.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave. Is the petitioner present?
Hi, Chuck Moss, representing Valley Investors at 6005 South Cliff.
Any questions? Any questions for Chuck?
See, Chuck, have you got your single-family development that's in the process of...
Yeah, we're in the first phase. We're actually waiting for the completion of 41st Street up to Line Drive and then we anticipate to pave out our streets once that's done. So hopefully soon, within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Chuck.
Any other questions for Chuck? I guess not. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address item number 28? Okay. I don't see anybody, so commission action?
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All right. Item 29 is a rezone from O Office District and RA1 Residential District to the C4 Plan Commercial District and the RA1 Residential District for allowed uses at East 41st and State Highway 11. This again is the same, same land.
Yep, that is correct. The difference that you'll note probably in your staff reports is that the size of this parcel is 8.5 acres as opposed to the six on the previous one. That was just because the maps of the future land use and the rezoning didn't line up originally and so this represents a little bit more land on the official zoning map of the city. So this land was first zoned in November 2006 and what's allowed in the C4, or the intent of the C4 Plan Development District is to generally be intensive retail, general merchandise, and other like commercial uses of a similar character. Again, the applicant is requesting to rezone to increase the size of the commercial area to coordinate with the access point onto East 41st Street. Because this is a higher-density land use than was originally approved, a new trip generation report to the city engineer has been submitted, which determined that an additional 14 feet of right-of-way from 66 to 80 feet of right-of-way on Line Drive Avenue is required. And that will be, that needs to be conducted prior to final approval of development engineering plans. As I stated in the previous report, sewer is available, water is available, and the developer, as far as drainage is concerned, because of the increase in land use, the developer should verify with the city engineer that runoff flow rates do not exceed that, which was previously established. But because the subject application provides for land uses that correspond to the approved access point and are in conformance with surrounding areas, staff is recommending approval of this rezoning.
Any questions for Dave?
Dave, how many additional feet did you say would be required?
It was 14 more feet. It was from 66 to 80.
Any other questions for Dave? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner still here?
Chuck Moss, 6005 South Cliff. Any questions?
Anything to add, Chuck?
We just modified the plan to fit to the street.
Any questions for Chuck? I guess not. Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address item 29 tonight? Seeing none. Commission action?
I move to approve item 29.
We have a motion to approve?
A second.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Items 30 and 31 have been deferred and so now we jump to item 32, which is a conditional use permit in the Ag, AG District to allow a sand and gravel quarry at 5020 East Rice Street.
Mr. Chairman? Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission, Jeffrey Schmidt with Planning, or the Planning Staff. I just wanted to clarify and state for everybody in the attendance tonight in the audience, we have said some electronic technical difficulties tonight with our audio and visual. You approved the agenda tonight, the consent agenda, items 1 through 24, so you approved those tonight. Those items have been approved. The ones that need to go forward to city council will go forward to city council. Otherwise, those items have been heard tonight. And as you just mentioned, and why I'm stepping up right now, you just mentioned that items 30 and 31 have been deferred. They will not be heard tonight. They will be deferred for 30 days. So, items 1 through 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31 have already been heard tonight. So, if there's anybody in the audience tonight that are waiting for those items, they're already been addressed this evening. So, item 32 is the conditional use.
Staff report. Item 32 is a conditional use in the AG district to allow sand and gravel quarry. Generally, the applicant is proposing to conduct sand and gravel mining and subsequent reclamation of the property. Applicants are represented by Eric Willison of Willison Land Engineering. The owner is Harold Gayden. It's a 25-acre site. Currently is a natural resource located out by Great Bear, and it's undeveloped wooded hillside. BSNF Railroad crosses through the property, and the applicant has been provided with the conditional use standards required to be addressed at this evening's meeting. They did provide us a paper copy of the proposed mining plan that indicated three areas of mineral extraction, a temporary sediment basement, basin, and flow alignment to a construction BMP, and a truck parking scale and tracking control area at the truck entrance on Rice Street, an access road from Rice Street with two private railroad crossings. These are the main elements of the mining plan, along with a description of the mining activity, including the type of equipment that would be used, basically, and a statement of how the site would be mined to what depths and how the sides would be stabilized and reclaimed. Project scope is defined as a mining operation for use in the construction industry in the Sioux Falls area. The existing site conditions are described as sandy and hilly terrain with substantial tree growth and little topsoil, and an environmental assessment was not required by the state for a mining permit. Therefore, one is not provided. They do state, though, that excavation is plus or minus 1350 elevation, approximately 30 feet above the elevation of Rice Street and 14 feet below the elevation of railroad line, and 150 feet below the highest elevation of the site, which is up against the Great Bear Park site. Mining operation methods are described as typical, with excavators, bulldozers, scrapers, loaders, dump trucks, and so on. Timeframe is indicated as Phase 1 being four to six years, Phase 2 being likely to take four to six years, and Phase 3 being the terracing and reclamation of the site, which would be completed in the final year of that for a total project of 10 to 12 years from the time they get started. Reclamation plan is described as no mining within 40 feet of the west property line next to Great Bear, but terracing of the 40 feet to match the mining area perimeter. Terracing would consist of one to four slopes maximum with 10 to 15 bench areas between each terrace. The reclamation plan also describes mined areas being sloped to the west and northwest at generally 1% to 3%, with some hills and swales remaining to retain a more natural The plan also describes the terrace and flatter mined areas being covered with a minimum of four to six inches topsoil and seeded with native and grass mixture to stabilize the area to a natural setting. It describes the temporary erosion control measures to be installed and remain in place until the area is restabilized with vegetation, and finally, a statement that future land use would conform to the then-current comprehensive plan when it is completed in 10 to 12 years. There are no substantial structures indicated on the plan, other than having to do with the road construction crossings, reclamation area, and parking area for the trucks that I am aware of. The conditional use requirements are indicated in your report, and the items are outlined as being required. Basically, the environmental assessment would have to do with establishing baseline conditions for soils, vegetation, and reclamation. And we do not have a copy of that. We would like to get one. Again, for the purpose of reclamation, we would like to establish the baseline to be Maps are provided showing the areas to be mined or milling operations. There is a description of the surface land use and vegetation, as well as description of the nature and depth of the topsoil and subsoil, and the application does go on to provide a description of the overburden mineral seams and geologic formations based on narrative. There is a description of the technical aspects of the mining. However, the hydrology is not provided. Hydrology would be the more deeper locations of water, including the mapping of depth of water, table, extent, and flow characteristics of groundwater. I think generally that they know that water is present out there, about where it's at as far as the table goes, and other than that, we don't know what they might run into as they start mining. We would like to see that. There is a technical description, like I said, but the statement of source, quality, and quantity of water to be used in the mining is not provided, and the characteristics of mined products, waste products, and emissions to the environment are not provided, noting that their emissions to the environment not only deal with the equipment that's being used on the site, but in the mining operation itself, there would be a generation of dust, fugitive dust that would be airborne. A description of the major environmental impacts on adjacent properties is not provided, and we would like to see that. There is a description of the proposed plan to address environmental impacts. However, procedures to prevent water and air contamination through the mining operations are not provided. A plan for reclamation after the mining is completed would like to be seen, at least as staff has become aware of the Great Bear concerns in the area of what the property would look like and how it would function after reclamation is being requested. That would also indicate the impact of the mining operation and its reclamation on adjacent land uses. We haven't heard from any of the residential uses up on top of the hill, at least not as of today. And we're not aware of the methods of revegetation of the property, although they have stated that that will be done. Our information indicates that it's difficult to establish vegetation in the area because of the thin topsoil and areas that are actually exposed to the gravel and sand, and so we would like to see that planned for revegetation. The applicant, then, finally, is required at specific phases to monitor and inspect the property to satisfy the conditions of the approval, if this body approves the condition use. And lastly, a conditional use permit shall be issued only after conditions specified have been met. Great Bear has provided a list of concerns. It's indicated in your report. Just to summarize quickly, the main concerns are lateral support, safety of people using the Great Bear recreational area, winter winds blowing dirt and sand from uncovered land areas across the snow, visual aesthetics, soil and slope stabilization, what the project is going to look like as it's reclaimed, because it is highly visible from the upper elevations, and they've requested deferral of the application to allow time for the applicant to respond to those concerns. Because the required information under the conditional use permit has not been provided at the time of this report, although talking to the applicant, they have stated they would like to address those concerns at tonight's meeting, and the list of concerns provided by Great Bear have not been addressed to our knowledge, staff is recommending deferral of the conditional use permit to allow time for the applicant to provide that information. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve?
Steve, was the petitioner aware that you were going to recommend a deferral on this particular action?
Yes.
Was he aware of the reasons that you were going to ask for the deferral?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? My sense, Steve, is that most, if not all, of the items that you've asked for, and the Park District have asked for, would be hard to address verbally, and really need either drawings or some sort of written report. Anything else for Steve? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Willison, Willison Land Engineering, 902 South Cleveland. Here tonight representing the owner of the property, Harold Gayden. Mr. Gayden is also here tonight. A little confused. Can you, all right, we were notified that they were planning a second deferral. We've already been deferred once. I found out about that on Monday. Called Parks Department, tried to meet with them, tried to meet with them on the site. They won't meet with us. Tried to meet with planning. They don't want to meet. It's like, how do we take care of these issues if nobody will meet with us? A little history on the site, quickly. I don't know, I mean, it got deferred last time. There was no presentation on it. This is a quarter section of land bounded by two section lines, neither which are improved. Right now, there's no access, legal access, to the site, other than the front portion off Rice Street. There are two railroad tracks that we are dealing with on this. This process started about a year and a half ago, and the first thing, we came to engineering to try and gain access to the property off of one of the section line roads. Mr. Gayden was willing to construct a road on the section line to enable him to get on and off his property. Nobody, that is like a last resort. I don't think anybody really wants those section lines improved, at least not now. So, I said, we'll go back and work out with Concrete Materials Sweetman's, who has the property adjacent to it, the asphalt and cement operation that's ongoing. They own the LS Eastern Railroad track that's right along Rice Street, and then just behind that, about 100 feet, or 200 feet, something like that, the Burlington Northern Railroad goes through as well. We applied for a temporary access permit from Burlington Northern last year. That permit was denied. There's a little bit of a curve on the railroad there. They suggested we try and combine the access with the existing private access or crossing that Concrete Materials has. So, we worked to deal with Concrete Materials and Burlington Northern Railroad to allow an access and to cross that to be able to get to the property. We've also applied for an access permit from City Engineering for access off of Rice Street. That access permit is pending upon approval of the conditional use permit. My client doesn't want to pay me to design that access. There'll be a deceler lane and a turning lane, a rather large pipe that has to be installed, and then the road constructed to go in. Until he gets a conditional use permit and knows that he can mine this, he doesn't want to do the design or pay for the design, shouldn't have to, until he knows. Now, it's October 1st, and they want another 30 days, which puts us into November, almost the end of the construction season. It's going to be literally impossible to try and construct that access in the wintertime. We've tried to address all these concerns. In fact, I don't think that's a fair assessment to say that we have not provided them with certain things. I think we have, and I'll go through them with you. We have provided a reclamation plan, and we have proof of Mr. Gayden's ability to reclaim sand mines, as he just finished, or has not even finished yet, it's in process, with reclaiming the Sweetman Mine that is just off of Cleveland, just north, or just south of Rice Street. That's been turned into timber line development, residential homes. That entire area's been reclaimed where the mine was. They're continuing to do some reclamation work on some areas that weren't mined. Very experienced in reclamation. He's got a permit from the state of South Dakota. He will have to provide a bond to the state of South Dakota for this reclamation work. I just want to go through a couple of the items that they indicated weren't provided and see what, why they are not, I mean, they're included in the reclamation plan if you read them. They said there's no plan for it, putting the topsoil back on and reclaiming it. Well, it's pretty clear in there, under the reclamation plan, that the terrace and the flatter areas that we plan to reclaim be covered with a minimum of four to six inches of topsoil and seeded with native wild grass mixture, similar to what's on the site right now, and plant trees that are needed.
Eric, do you have a copy of that reclamation plan?
It's right here. It's right there. There should be two pages to it. There's a second page. I mean, they're saying that our schedule wasn't in here. The schedule's right here in the mining operation. I mean, Steve even quoted the schedule, but it says that the schedule wasn't provided. We've provided the Parks Department with the reclamation plan. It indicates in here that we will stay, we will mine no closer than 40 feet from their property line, and the actual limits of Phase 2, which is the limits of the mining, are actually about 200 feet from their property line. And what we're going to do between the 40 and that 200 is simply terrace that down, essentially at flatter slopes than are there right now, and then at the bottom of it where the sand's been removed, level that area off, and slope it towards the tracks, which is where the drainage is, from 1% to 3%. That's what the plan indicates. That's what the narrative indicates. So, when they say there's not a reclamation plan, it's like, I'm not sure what they're looking for.
Eric, can you address the bullets, though, that they're asking for? Those are the things I think we're looking at.
Which one would you like to start?
Bullets. On page 70, bullets 71 in ours, where water and electric service, Great Bear is concerned about safety, the dirt blowing, the aesthetics of Great Bear, the soil and slope.
On the supplemental information, starting out there, where the description of the minerals are to be mined, it's sand, it's provided. First one they say that wasn't provided was the environmental assessment. It's not required for sand mining. That's, you know, radioactive intoxicants and...
Eric, did you, was there a meeting between the landowner and Great Bear? Have they met as neighbors to talk about?
I begged to meet with them yesterday, or Monday, and it's like, well, it's a board...
But Eric, if you've been trying to do this for a couple of months...
They were provided with the plan after the first deferral, and then they told me they didn't even get the plan till a week and a half ago. That's not true.
Just a second, Eric. Eric, have you completed your presentation before we dive into these questions? Have you completed what you wanted to add?
I guess what I'm looking at here is this is a conditional use permit. It's conditional. You can place conditions on it, any conditions that you want. It's not rezoning. If you want to place conditions on it, do. I have a list of conditions that, if that'll satisfy the Parks Department, the owner says he'd be more than happy to include those conditions with it.
We'll get to the Parks District here in a second. I was more concerned about your... I was more concerned about your provision of information to the commission. Are you, have you completed your presentation? We're well past the five minutes.
Look, you know, if you want to go through these or whatever, what they're saying, you know, the hydrology, it says in the reclamation plan, we are not going below the depth of the water table. So I guess there's a whole lot of things that we think can be worked out between us if we can get the conditional use permit to get them started.
No, it's usually done the other way around. You work it out, and then you get the conditional use permit.
Conditional use permits, if I recall, are reviewable on a yearly basis or whatever basis that you need.
Not unless, not unless we absolutely have to.
And we're looking at, if there are problems, we're looking at, put a condition on it. Shut it down.
Eric, that's enough. Any questions for Eric?
Eric, this seems like a very complicated issue.
In what way?
Two months ago, you, this was on the agenda, but it was deferred for this information. Did you make any attempt in that first 30 days to address this information?
Absolutely, and provided them with that information. They did another staff review on that information, which I received Monday.
What you're bumping into now is the construction season.
That's what we're looking at, is we started in July thinking that we could get this done yet this year and get the road built this year. With another 30-day deferral, it's not going to happen this fall. And that's just, I think, unfair to the property owner, who's been trying for a year and a half just to access his property. They want, you know, they, they're in here, they're asking for some type of soil boring, soil samples. We can't get a truck legally there. We can't cross the tracks until we have this agreement in place, which won't come until the conditional use. Let me talk to you a little bit. One of the Park Department's concerns was lateral support, wherever that came from. Lateral support essentially is to prevent that hill from sliding down any farther in slope sloughing off. It's, the content of those hills is generally sand. The angle of repose, getting into some engineering terms, the angle of repose of dry sand is essentially 30 degrees, which is about a 1 to 2 slope. The angles that we're proposing, 4 to 1, are more on the lines of 14 degrees. So we're actually going to flatten some of those slopes, and it will, there's actually going to be less potential for any kind of lateral displacement with this than what there is out there right now. So I don't think lateral support is really an issue. That's been taken care of. It's been addressed. The slopes we're proposing are more than adequate for the sand.
Any other questions for Eric?
Eric, I don't think we're necessarily opposed to mining. Just as Kenny said, it's a very complex plan to start a mine where there hasn't been one before. For a year and a half, if you've been working about it, on it, you know who your neighbors are, and a year and a half, you can't get a meeting with Great Bear? And we're trying to schedule it in five days before the meeting, or four days, two days before the meeting? You know, I think there's some valid concerns there about the wind and the deposits of sand across the slopes in the winter, and I'd be interested in knowing how Mr. Gayden thinks he can handle that.
Absolutely, and I'm sorry, and I didn't mean to interrupt, but I did, I asked him that exact question. I said, are you having problems right now with sand blowing across the ski slopes? And they said, no, it's never been a problem. The land right now is sand, it's bare. I mean, so if sand were going to blow over that slope, winds are predominantly out of the northwest, so they're going to blow away from that, not to it. You know, another condition, if there's some type of screening that needs, if there's a problem with sand blowing there, he'd be more than willing to put up some type of screening. If they have another issue that they're concerned about security for the people at Great Bear, the owners agreed to fence it. They'll fence it and put up no trespassing signs. So, I mean, those are some pretty easy things.
But can you understand what I'm saying, that if you're working on it for a year and a half?
It was not all with the Parks Department. The year and a half was with Engineering, Burlington Northern, LS Eastern, and Concrete Materials, just to gain access to the site.
Yep, I can appreciate that. But you know, when you get down to this, you need to have your neighbors on board. Right?
And from Great Bear, at the top of the ski slope, which I believe is the out-of-bounds area, is the only place you can see this from.
But they're still your neighbors.
Correct.
You're going to mine within 40 feet of the property line or 120 feet, whatever. You use both numbers. They're your neighbor, you know they're your neighbor, you need to be meeting with them along the process, I believe.
I've asked them at least three or four times between planning and the Parks Department, will you please meet with us?
All right, let's end the questions for Eric and probably time.
If you do elect to defer, we want a meeting with the Parks Department.
I can appreciate that.
Hold on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would also like to address this issue?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Dave Fisher. I'm the Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation for the city of Sioux Falls. I just want to shed a little bit of light on the timeline here as this issue has come to us. It's a case where our department has been aware for quite some time that the applicant has been pursuing the right to be able to mine near Great Bear. We felt it was our responsibility to be able to find out more information, and in particular, find out more information about a reclamation plan. We first received a copy of that reclamation plan on September 12th. On September 12th, that was a Friday, it was late in the day that we got it, the first part of the following week, our staff took a look at it, and we felt it was responsible on our part to be able to coordinate a meeting with our partners at Great Bear. Great Bear is actually managed by Great Bear Recreation Park Incorporated, their Board of Directors. So we lined up a meeting with them, and also the Development Committee of our Parks and Recreation Board, to be able to review the plan, the reclamation plan. We took our combined comments and got those to the Planning Department on the 19th. So by the end of the following week, we'd had a meeting, we'd generated our collective comments, and we'd gotten to the Planning Department. The next time that our department was contacted was by the applicant, and as he said, it was on Monday of this week, asking for a meeting to sort through some of the concerns that we had put forward. We did talk through those a little bit on the telephone, but we also talked about, there's probably not time in the next 48 hours to be able to provide the kind of information that we were looking for. And that being said, what we would like to see is to be able to have more time for the applicant, to be able to produce the information that will make us a little more comfortable that the operation and the reclamation plan will not compromise the recreational opportunity that exists out there right now for tens of thousands of people. Also tonight, Steve Sanford, who's the President of the Board for Great Bear Recreation Park Incorporated, is here, and I think he's got a few comments he'd like to share. Any questions for me?
Questions for Dave?
Dave, you would have no problem trying to set a meeting up in the next week or so if this were deferred? Does the Park Department have any issues with this mining if these questions are answered to your satisfaction?
No, I assured, I assured the applicant, when I talked to him on the telephone, that we were more than willing to work with him in terms of this process. But we just know from the management of the facility out at Great Bear that it's not as easy to reclaim a site like that as what they maybe are suggesting in their current reclamation plan. So, again, we kind of covered some of that territory on Monday, and had suggested that once they get the information that we're looking for, we'd be more than happy to sit down and work with them on this process.
Thank you, Dave.
Dave, typically, we as planning commissioners get our information or cue, so to speak, regarding stipulations on conditional use permits from either staff or from the neighbors. And my sense is that, at least in the case of the Parks Department, you haven't had time to think about what, if any, stipulations you'd like to see as a part of this conditional use permit.
Yeah, I think our feeling is just that there's not enough information for us to really formulate a good opinion about the soundness of the reclamation plan that they've put together to date.
Any other questions for Dave? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Steve Sanford, 200 East 10th Street here in Sioux Falls. I'm President of Great Bear Recreation Park, Inc., which is a private nonprofit entity with a volunteer board of directors that since 1991 has managed Great Bear Recreation Park and overseen its development and operation. I'd like to kind of lower the tone a little bit and try to present our commitment to be open-minded and cooperate with our neighbor. If we can simply have the opportunity to not just here generalize, it'll be fine, but know more about the things that are of concern to us, and know that our reasonable concerns will be addressed specifically. We have a number of categories of concerns. You know, first of all, this is a very unique park. It's the largest city park by, I think, a great margin. It's not just bear land. The city and the citizens of the community have an enormous financial investment out there, millions of dollars. And this use, if done poorly, incorrectly, or otherwise, could be of great harm. And it might not be. It might be okay. The problem is, we just don't have the kind of information that we need to make that assessment, and as a neighbor, be satisfied that this will be done properly. And it consistent with the city's enormous and the community's enormous investment there. Ironically, we are just starting a Phase Two of long-range planning of how to broaden and diversify the uses of the park that eventually will, over 10, 15 years, again, call for the investment of a great deal of money and effort. All we ask, and I must say that I've not been contacted, other than, as Dave addressed, in the last month, while we're a private organization, I think we're very publicly known, having a critical role in the management there. And I don't want to blame anybody, and I don't want to get mad, I don't want to pound my fist, but we just need more information. I think, as a neighbor, and the kind of use we have there, and the importance of the community, that we deserve more than a few minutes at a podium, only minutes before the commission decide the issue. And if this has been going on for a year and a half, I regret not being involved, I wish I were, I wish our group were. But we ask that it be deferred. I assure you that we're not hiding out. We'll deal with this in good faith and diligently, and we'd like to come out of this process, if there's a deferral, with agreement as neighbors as to how this will be done. Thank you.
Steve, any questions for Steve?
Steve?
We have a couple of questions here for you.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Would you be good enough to share your phone number with Eric, as far as him being able to contact?
Sure, with the world, it's 336-0828. My cell phone is 360-7641.
Any other questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that wishes to address item number Steve, you're not coming up here, or?
I guess I need to apologize, and I thought we were working with the Park Department, not the Great Bear Board. And our contacts have all been through the Park Department, and that's why we have not contacted that board.
I sense, and I'm not speaking for the commission, but I sense you're dealing with at least the Park Board and the Great Bear people, and maybe others, I don't know.
My understanding was the liaison was for us through the park, and then for the park staff, and park staff then to the board and the Great Bear Board. We'll work with all, I mean, if...
Eric, did Steve or Dave...
We just want to meet.
Did Steve or Dave say anything unrealistic? I mean, as far as wanting a little more input and a little more information in regards to how he wants to...
You know, and that's what I was asking, you know, that's why I want to meet with them. I need to know exactly what they're looking for. One of the bullet points of Parks, is they want a 3D rendering of what it's going to look like when it's done. That's a lot to ask of an owner to produce for a conditional use permit, I think. A 3D rendering? And we're not sure exactly, you know, exactly where the slope will be and how much mine, you know, how much sand is there, so...
Eric, again, we're glad to hear that you're willing to sit down, it sounds to us, at least at the other two parties, and if there are others, you should find them too, are more than willing to sit down too. Between the, between you, your client, and the other neighbors, you'll come back and tell us what common ground you've found, and what that constitutes in terms of models and drawings and reports, so...
I guess Ken asked me if there's anything that seemed a little odd. That seemed a little odd, Ken.
Thank you, Eric.
We don't know. Any other questions for Eric? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question of staff?
Sure can. Mr. Staff?
Steve, what I hear from Eric, I think as far as a time issue, is his access point off of Rice Avenue, as far as trying to get that built in anticipation of everything going okay. Apparently, Engineering is telling him without a conditional use permit, they won't issue him an access permit on Rice.
That's what I hear. I haven't heard that directly from Engineering, but...
Oh, Jeff, is that difficult, Jeff?
Yes. Exactly.
Don't do that. Thank you, Steve.
Hi, Jeff Schmidt, City Planning. I'll answer the question. Access permits through City Engineering can be granted at any time. Okay, you can get it with a conditional use, you can get it with a concept plan, you can get it at your final development plan, your rezoning. What Eric was saying was, his client does not want to go forward and do the work necessary to get that access permit unless he knows he has the conditional use from you. So it's not that Engineering's requiring an access permit with the conditional use. The applicant, and Eric stated up here, he said, and I don't fault him for that, his applicant doesn't want to go forward and do the work on the access permit without knowing he has the conditional use. It's not what staff's saying, that's what...
I didn't understand that exactly like that, but... So, if he were to decide, hey, I think we can come make Great Bear comfortable and the Park Department comfortable, with weather being an issue as far as that access point, he could have the option of going ahead and going ahead with that work.
Yes.
Thank you.
I sense that's the owner's decision, so, okay. I sense that's the owner's decision, so, okay. Commission action?
I would make a motion to defer this item as there are several issues left to be resolved, most importantly being the investment of Great Bear and the impact that a mining operation would have on their closest neighbor. I believe that none of this is probably insurmountable, and it's unfortunate of the timing, but I think we do need to allow the opportunity for all the parties to come together and reach a resolution. So I would make a motion to defer item number thirty-two.
Is that for thirty days, Jesse?
Yes.
We have a motion to defer for thirty days, is there a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Item number thirty-three is a conditional use permit in the RS2 Residential District to allow a church without frontage on an arterial or collector street at 701 South Garfield Avenue. Staff report?
Just to clarify, churches are allowed in residential districts on non-arterial or collector streets, subject to certain conditions. That's why it's a conditional use application. And the conditional use standards are indicated in your staff report, I'll read those for you. These uses shall be located in areas where their impact on adjacent properties would not be detrimental due to their large-sized traffic situation or parking lots. They shall be designed to minimize their impact on properties of a residential nature through landscaping, setbacks, screening, and other appropriate measures. Having said that, we have a plan that's been presented by the applicant to remodel an existing residential structure and property for their use in religious assembly. The existing house, garage, and breezeway are shown being remodeled for the proposed use. We have remodeling plans that have been submitted, as well as a site plan for parking, fencing, and walkway improvements. The applicant is also currently working with Building Services to improve their plan application to meet code requirements, and also revising the site plan to meet zoning requirements. Staff can support the proposed use because a large parking lot and traffic situation are not proposed. An existing residential design characteristics of the house and garage are being maintained. The applicant has been advised to report any neighborhood comments at this public hearing. They were required to contact Garfield Elementary School, which is across the street, to inform them about the conditional use application. And the applicant has provided an affidavit posting that they have done that. Because this application does provide clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, and it does require a complete plan check by zoning and building services before they can get an occupancy permit, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit. We have received numerous calls and a letter from people who live in the neighborhood on the same block generally as the proposed use. I believe they're represented here this evening and would like to present their comments to you. The concerns, as staff understands it, have to do with parking, the number of people that assemble on the site, and the hours which they do assemble. Other than that, that concludes staff report.
Thanks, Steve. Any questions for Steve?
Steve, you talked about a revised site plan, because the current one that we have doesn't really show anything relative to screening or any of those issues.
Yes, I have that site plan here, if you'd like to see it.
I'm making it hard on Steve.
So Steve, is there a total of eight parking spots? Or is that parking spots on the right?
Yes, so those are the parking spots, is this where? The parking spots that are indicated on the plan are in the rear yard of the subject property, which is currently vacant. I mean, it's a rear yard that has tree and some, and grass. But their proposed plan didn't quite meet the requirements for Engineering, and so this was submitted to us today, this morning. We took it down to Engineering to see what they thought of it, and the red lines indicates staff comments on their plan as of today. That they could get as many as seven parking spots back there in a parking lot that could be approved by city Engineering and zoning. If there were a variance in terms of the handicap parking stall loading space, then they could get eight parking spots. Based on the zoning ordinance requirements for occupancy of assembly, one car would serve four seats within the building, so seven would serve twenty-eight. And that's about all I could say on it, as far as their parking, proposed parking lot goes. This is staff comments on their proposed plan.
So Steve, based on where we're at today, if we decided to proceed and approve this plan, we certainly should add a stipulation that there is an approval process for the final site plan through city Engineering and city planning. There's still bugs to work out on this site plan.
You could. It wouldn't be necessary, because they have to do it no matter what the recommendation of the planning commission would be as far as stipulations go.
The landscaping piece?
What you could stipulate is occupancy based on available parking.
Do we consider street parking?
No. Just onsite parking.
Steve, does staff have any concern about the lack of parking? This being a church, I'm assuming most churches grow. At seven spots, we're talking twenty-eight people, I don't know what that breaks down to as a per-family type of situation, but could there not be a huge risk that they could rapidly outgrow this particular site, or should we not be concerned about that?
The concern would be that they function well at this property and get along with their neighbors until the time comes that they need to relocate because they are growing. And then they would relocate, because then this site would no longer serve their needs.
We, Steve, we hear a comment, spot zoning talked about an awful lot, and it's a policy to not do spot zoning. Does this not qualify for spot zoning because a church is in allowed use in a single family?
That's correct. It does not qualify for the designation of spot zoning because it is in allowed use in the existing zoning. And it's allowed by conditions. That's the job we force tonight, is to determine under what conditions could it be allowed.
So Steve, can you answer for us, based on code, what the occupancy would be for the seven parking spaces for the twenty-seven?
The zoning code requires one parking spot for every four seats. We do not have an occupancy statement, other than the applicant has indicated in their application to us that twenty or so people are being planned for. I would like the applicant to address that, because with twenty, you'd only need five spaces. If it's thirty or twenty-eight, we know that we can get seven spaces, for sure.
Well, it sounds like what we're talking about is the maximum size of the church could be twenty-eight people.
Based on parking provided, that's correct. And you could stipulate that.
And it could be signed that way.
And it could be indicated in their conditional use, which, based on a decision letter, then would be on file. And if they exceed that, then complaints would have to come in in order to remedy the situation. But again, I feel that a lot of organizations, just to get started, I mean, how many churches have started in somebody's basement? Just to get started, need a place to go, and as they outgrow that space which is healthy for them, they realize that they need more space, more parking, more, bigger building, and so on, and they go find that. If it's not available here, then it's available somewhere else, but they are started.
Steve, does the square footage of the house, is that compatible with an occupancy of twenty people or twenty-eight people?
Again...
I don't see anything on here that talks about the square footage.
Okay, the plan that you have in your report, again, was revised and resubmitted to us today as a remodeling plan for what they plan to do. The original square footage of the facility there was eight hundred some square feet, and now they have provided a plan for sixteen hundred some square feet. That's taking the existing garage and remodeling that to be part of the occupied space, whereas previously, you know, the residential square footages are based on the occupied area, not the garage.
And it sounds like zoning looks at this as number of seats, but in terms of occupancy, is this a twenty-square-foot-per-person occupancy?
That, I don't know, it depends on the number of exits and that sort of thing, and that evaluation has not been yet done yet. They're still working with them to meet the code requirements for the number of bathrooms.
So if Building Services looked at this and said sixteen hundred square foot, yeah, twenty square foot, that's eighty people, how do we justify the difference between that, which only affects exits, and the parking for the zoning?
Stipulation, limiting the number, the occupancy, based on parking.
Probably time to hear from the petitioner, unless somebody has a question, another question for Steve? Thank you. Is the petitioner here tonight?
Good evening, Alia Jekic, 105 North Holly Avenue, representing Slime Community of South Dakota. I'm ready to answer any questions.
Is your first name Alia?
Yes.
A-L-I-A?
A-L-I-J-A. Last name D is in David, Z-E-K-I-C.
Okay, did you get that? Oh, yeah.
Rolls up your tongue, doesn't it?
Well, you've heard some of the questions tonight, but I'll turn this over to the commissioners, and they can certainly ask you some more specific questions. Questions for Alia?
Sure.
Alia, the remodeling that you're going to do here, there isn't going to be anybody living in the house.
No.
This will be used for services only?
Our main service is on Fridays, approximately one hour, like quarter to one, one o'clock to one-thirty to one-forty-five. I mean, our main service starts at one, ends at one-thirty, but then people come and leave in about fifteen minutes, so...
Are you concerned about the size of the parking for this particular building? I mean, based on some of the conversation we're having here?
You know, when I look at the number of people that come on our current Friday service, we hold it over in Oyate Community Center, and we get approximately eighteen to twenty people to that. I mean, that's when the people come to that service. And you know, when I look at the parking, everybody is concerned for parking in Sioux Falls, and so are we, and that's why we're having funds ready, that's why we're working with city and commission and building and planning to accommodate the parking spaces up to the code and every other requirement that we can up to the code, so we can accommodate the people, so we can have enough people to eventually, in five years or whenever, we can get to a bigger and better location for us. And where we will have more space for more parking.
You have services Fridays?
Yes.
Saturdays?
No, our main service is on Friday.
Friday.
It's like in Sunday Mass for Christians, for us, it's Friday.
And you said you're currently operating at the Oyate?
Yes, we have our Friday service over at Oyate, because we cannot have the services in our current building.
How many people are you planning for anticipated growth?
You know, quite frankly, it took us a couple of years to get from five, four, five people to twenty that we have now. I mean, it could be another two, three, five years till we hit that maximum limit.
I'm just concerned about the parking. If we did have a stipulation where you were limited to twenty-eight people, you know, you could outgrow that quite quickly, and I don't know what you're investing in this home to do remodeling and...
And I agree with that statement, but when I said that we had twenty people that come, you know, that's most of it that ever have showed up, you know? We usually get dozen, fifteen people that come to the service at one time, you know? So it's never that we're always fully, full capacity, you know?
So that would be the only day of the week that you would anticipate having?
In a nutshell, yes.
With regard to the parking around the house, do you have to put anything down like tar, or can it just be the dirt or grass?
We are planning, we have funds ready to put a regular parking, you know, asphalt or concrete, whatever we have, we're just waiting for a final board, you know, we're working, is it four, or is it seven or eight spaces, handicap access and everything, so we can get a contractor in to build it. We have funds ready, and we're ready to pursue that.
I was just wondering if this could be turned back into a home, if you outgrew it quickly?
If we, I mean...
Have you been looking for a site for some time?
Yes, the issue that we had originally, of course, it's like with everything else, was money, you know? We did not have hundreds and thousands of dollars readily available to purchase what we wanted. So we found a property that would serve our needs for some time, that we can just get in, establish ourselves in the neighborhood, in the community, make it a more diverse community, spiritually, culturally, and everything else, and then to move on, you know? Like I say, it was funds that we were, again, we started with, okay, what can we get for thirty thousand dollars, what can we get for forty thousand? Then, you know, if we had hundred fifty thousand dollars, we would not be talking about parking issues, because we would be out in the country having a two, three acre lot, you know, a brand-new building.
Have you had a neighborhood meeting? Have you invited the people over?
When we originally purchased the home, a member of our church did go through the neighborhood, tried to approach them. We are planning, once we have everything remodeled inside, to have an open house, to so neighborhoods are more developed to see how it looks inside. We're more than welcome anytime to answer any questions that any of the neighbors might have in regards to that, you know, but...
This is a fairly established neighborhood. I think this was probably developed in the forties and fifties, pretty well developed out. I suspect that change, like what you're proposing, probably makes some people feel a little, a little on the, on edge side. You were asked to visit with the school, and you guys did that. Did the school respond to you as far as them having a problem with you having a church there?
School didn't have a problem. Lots of kids, lots of the parents that come to our church, they have kids that go to Garfield Elementary, you know? I live five blocks away, you know? My kid doesn't, the other member that's over here, he has two kids that are going to the same school, his son is in high school right now, but lots of our members have the kids that are in that school, and we are really well-established. We know the area also. So, I mean, as much as it is concern for the other neighbors, it's our concern too, because we want to keep that area safe and clean as everybody else does.
Any other questions for Alia? Okay, thank you. Are there others in the audience tonight that wish to address item number thirty-three? Would you come up to the podium, please?
My name is Gerald Folkerts, I live at 700 South Williams Avenue, directly to the rear of the property in question.
Did you say Darrell?
Gerald, G-A-R-O-L-D. The last name is F-O-L-K-E-R-T-S. My wife and I own this home and have lived there for thirty-eight years. 701 South Garfield is the property in question tonight, and the one that's being addressed here. This is a single-family dwelling, and has been a single-family dwelling for as long as we've lived there, which would have been thirty-eight years. The lady went into a nursing home and subsequently it was sold. Several months ago, we became aware that the residents had been sold. We also became aware that shortly after it was sold, it was... We also became aware that shortly after it was sold, it was being turned into a meeting place or an Islamic-type center. Thinking back, this would have been probably in the spring of this year. We observed construction take place nearly immediately. We observed large groups of men attending what we appeared, what we thought were meetings. These meetings occurred various times of the day and night, and nearly every day that we can determine, except Sundays seems like a day that isn't observed. During these times, construction continued. I also learned from city building permit people that building permits had not been obtained. I learned from zoning that various conditions had been set for the owners, including that property remain in a single-family status, and that building permits must be obtained, and that, and that, and I also discovered at that time that they also were instructed to cease the meetings that were being conducted. I observed that these activities continued. On September 12th of this year, at approximately 1:00 in the afternoon, I observed numerous cars parked by the residents. I observed approximately 18 adult men depart this residence. Activity of this nature continues even as of today. It appears to me, from what I learned from zoning, that this would have been in direct violation of what they had instructed these people to do. As an opponent of this issue, my argument is that 701 South Garfield has always been a single-family dwelling, and is not designed to be a meeting, meeting place for numerous people. I feel that 800 square feet probably is, is stretching the point. I noticed that as of today, they have completed construction on the garage. So it appears to me that the garage now has been turned into a meeting place as well. To change the property into a meeting place to, to satisfy this amount of people, in my opinion, would be impossible. Sanitary conditions being one of the issues that concerns me. This is a small house on a concrete slab, and to extend bathroom facilities, I'm sure the floor would have to be jackhammered up. To convert the small backyard, which borders my property and our fence, in my opinion, would cost more than the entire home. In conclusion, 701 South Garfield is small, a one-bath home, not designed for assembly place for the amount of people that I have seen exit the home, and would be impossible to realistically convert it to such a facility. Thank you.
Gerald.
Gerald.
Yes, sir.
Hold on for just a second here. Are there any questions for Gerald?
There's not been a neighborhood meeting, then? You've been invited to-
No, ma'am. I've been approached by the gentleman, one of the gentlemen that I'm assuming is a parishioner there, that informed me of their intent of the property. I voiced my opinion to him, and that would have been the, the just of the, of the contact that I've had with the people. The other neighbors, as well, have not been contacted. I believe the gentleman directly across the street had some, a little conversation in regards to the same thing that I did.
Okay. Any other questions for Gerald? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address item number 33?
Good evening. My name is Kevin Husterlid, and I'm at 701 South Williams Avenue, directly across the street from Gary. And I don't want to go over the same things that Gary has said, but I do agree with everything that he has told you, as far as the hours, the people that are leaving, the times that they come, the times that they go. And he, he mentioned that he's concerned about sanitary. I come from a background of construction, and I see life safety issues. I see issues with ADA. I see current codes, building codes, being violated, and I feel that the parking is a huge issue. Currently, I'm working on a project where putting in a parking lot. To put a parking lot in of the size that I saw today would probably run somewhere around $60,000. The house itself was purchased at around $50,000. It's now been taken and remodeled, so there's no longer a garage. It is not suitable to be sold again on the market as a residential house. With a parking lot in the backyard, tearing it up probably costs a homeowner $20,000. You're virtually taking this house off the market by bringing it up to code, and it will never be anything else but a vacant lot or an empty house if you go ahead and approve this. I have not been approached in any way, manner, or form regarding any way, any floor plans, any design, any, any way to modify the property as far as what it would look like in the future when they're done. We've not had a neighborhood meeting in any way, manner, or form. And, you know, I guess one of my biggest concerns is what's it going to look like in three or four years? Also, all the construction that has been done so far has been done with the place being occupied, has been remodeled. If this, if this house is to be remodeled and completely reused, brought up to ADA codes and standards, it needs to be vacated. It needs to be emptied, vacated. The bathrooms need to be removed, completely brought up to ADA, and it has to be a stop use. And it is not right now. My second concern is, as far as all, all of the issues here, and there's lots, is just that the, the items aren't followed through on. If they're told to stop, they don't stop, and I think that will happen in the future. As they're remodeling, and they're going to continue to remodel, and they're going to fund as they go. So maybe they'll get enough money to put curb and gutter in and leave the parking lot gravel. Maybe they'll get enough money to put in some trees or the items that they need, and then leave the rest go. But I think it's going to be a very progressive, and I, I just think that the neighborhood should be aware of what's going on. There should be a neighborhood meeting. This needs to be deferred so that we can all find out what's, what's going to happen in the future. Or if you're going to pass, approve this, it needs to be stipulated that all these items bring this house up to code have to be done before they can occupy it. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Kevin, before I turn this over to commissioners for questions, I think it's important for you and the rest of the audience to know that as a planning commission, while we understand and appreciate code issues, life safety issues, we're really only charged with land use issues, but I, I believe the commission is comfortable that to go through the building permit process, those concerns regarding life safety, ADA, and so forth would have to be addressed. The other thing that you mentioned would be, were the stipulations, and yes, as a part of a conditional use permit, we as a commission are allowed to attach stipulations. So, any questions for Kevin regarding his presentation?
To address your comment, I think the stipulation must be attached, that the house needs to be vacated, be inspected by an inspector, and, and if you issue a conditional use, I believe the occupants will begin using it as is, because it's an existing structure. If it was a, a building to be demolished and then rebuilt-
They, they can't do that. Our, again, we only deal with land use issues. They still have to get a building permit. And to get the building permit, they have to have this conditional use permit. So they go hand in hand, and there are a lot of different factors within City Hall and Building Services that will become a part of the process of-
I'm well aware of them.
-organizing how that happens, so. Any questions for Kevin? Okay, thanks. Anyone else that would like to address item 33? Again, if you can, try to highlight issues that have not been covered so far.
I will do that.
Your name?
My name is Jeannie, J-E-A-N-N-E. Her last name is Sarda, C-A-R-D-A. My address is 704 South Williams. And I live next door to Gary, the first man that spoke. The property that's in question does also attach to mine in the corner. My concern is the property values that I have in my home. My home was, the area was residential when I purchased my home 20 years ago, and I have no objection to a church moving in, but I do object to this particular location, having a parking lot put in there, because when they decide to move from this lot, it's going to be a very unusual house, or whatever it would be, and who would want to buy it? And therefore, it's going to set vacant, and it's going to deteriorate, which would further deteriorate the neighborhood, the property values that we have. That's my concern, is my property value. I just, I put $6,000 in my home, in home improvements and landscaping, just this last spring. And for what? When, when this construction is done, if it looks shabby and poorly constructed, as it looks now, my home value is going to be zero, and resale. And, and who's going to want to buy a house that's with a parking lot right behind it? I mean, that's our backyard, basically. It's just a big, big concern. I think that the school right across the street, if, if they, if they're short of money, can't they use the parking lot of the school?
It's done sometimes.
Yeah. That would be, that would solve their economic problem, and it would solve our neighborhood problem. It would save our values. Thank you.
Jeannie, just a second. Any questions for Jeannie?
Jeannie, I just want to reiterate what Meredith said. The plan, the role of the planning commission is to rule on land use issues, and a church in a residential neighborhood is permitted under this land use.
I understand that, yeah. I, I understand that, but this was a residential section or residential area when I purchased my home, and having a parking lot right behind me like that, you, you have to see it to appreciate it, and-
Jeannie, are there people living in the home right now?
No, there's not. I'm not aware of, I, I'm not home during the day, and I, I don't pay a lot of attention to what's going on and what's coming and going and whatever. My concern, like I say, is the property values.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take one more. If there's one more person that wishes to get up and address item number 33, we would listen to that testimony. Okay.
Meredith, I have a question for staff.
Uh, who's rep, is this yours, Steve?
If we, if we do a conditional use permit to have this as a church, would it be fair to add a stipulation that sort of clarified the non-residency issue and potentially put hours of operation around the church that would be somewhat protected for the neighborhood?
If you feel that it's important to not cause a detrimental effect, which is one of the conditions for approval, then yes, you could do that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Steve. Commission action.
I'll get a motion on the table. I do believe that there are still some issues to work out between the neighborhood and the applicant. And at this point in time, I, I feel that, that they can discuss and come to an agreement. I saw some creative things being discussed tonight, parking within the school, just some different things that it sounds like they haven't been able to talk about. I would recommend deferral on this item this evening for 30 days to allow them the opportunity to talk.
We have a motion for deferral. Is there a second?
I would second that motion.
We have a motion and a second for deferral on item 33. Is there any further discussion?
My feeling is, is this, whether we defer it or not, unless the neighborhood can embrace this, it'd be hard for me to support it. I think we're talking about a neighborhood that has been there for 50, 60 years. In, in my estimation, is it the best place to establish a new church? I personally don't think so. That being said, if a deferral would generate a neighborhood meeting, that the neighborhood could come in here and say, hey, we'd like to see it here, I guess that would change my mind, but-
Okay. Any other discussion?
Our intent is not to lower the prices in the neighborhood. Our intent is not to have negative impact to anything in the neighborhood, change it in any way. It's our place of worship. We want to keep it as we will keep our own house clean and nice, you know? As far as the hours when people come in, I work from 8 to 5, 8 to 6, 8 to 7, you know? I come in, we're trying to save the money for the parking lot.
We're really not, we're beyond the point of taking testimonies, so let us finish the action, and then we can have a real quick discussion on where you and the neighbors might go from here.
Okay.
Okay? Any other commission discussion?
Well, again, it, it is allowed use in the residential, and, and I think, again, I would like to concur with Anita. I think, I'd like to see the people be open and creative, and we have churches and neighborhoods all over the city that are not conventional church buildings, that are in homes, and they get it worked out. And I think there's great opportunity here. So I would like, I'd like to see these neighbors come together in a cooperative spirit to meet with Ali and his organization and see what we can come up with in a month.
Anyone else? Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor of the deferral of item 33 signify by saying yes.
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 Alia, what I would do is get together with planning staff. I would also encourage the neighbors, because I sense that you're going to get a notice of a public meeting to, to attend. I think it's incumbent on the applicant to, I saw you taking notes, to do everything you can in the form of drawings, and whatever other collateral you need to indicate how this development would occur, what it would look like, and what the details are at that point in time, so. Thank you. Thanks to the neighbors for coming tonight as well. Okay, item 34 is a conditional use permit in the I-1 Light Industrial District to allow a motor vehicle repair shop at 1,800 East Benson Road. Staff report.
Motor vehicle repair shops are allowed by conditional use in the I-1. They shall provide an adequate number of parking spaces to store the cars, and shall provide appropriate areas for the storage of parts and/or materials which shall be screened from view. Those are the conditions which you would approve. Any other conditions that are required for site improvement, building improvement, building codes, parking, and so on, will be applied when they come in and apply for their change in use, it's Vaughn Trucking, it used to be Vaughn Trucking, to a motor vehicle repair shop. And Building Services and zoning will apply those zoning requirements and building code requirements and fire safety requirements for them to get their permit. Aside from that, the applicant has provided a site plan that indicates landscaping improvements, and does indicate the parking that is existing there with unimproved surface as required. However, the rest of the lot appears to be gravel, and they will be required to make improvements to the driving surfaces and the required parking surfaces to accommodate those vehicular conditions. The rest of the site, as far as landscaping goes, is confined principally to the front yard setbacks, which are on three sides of dedicated right-of-way. The west side is unimproved right-of-way at the present time, and one of the conditions for approval, if they are going to use that side for access to their property, would be for them to petition for improvements on that street, and at that time, also provide public sidewalk. And at that time, also provide public sidewalk. So we have three conditions for approval. We are recommending approval with these conditions, petition for street improvements on North Jessica Avenue, provide public sidewalks along all city streets and provide this mix of trees that we found will be beneficial to the community as a whole in the future. That pretty much concludes staff report. We have been in contact with the owner, uh, or excuse me, the applicant and their representatives that who I believe are here this evening to speak to you on this. The question that they broached to us was, could these improvements take place over a period of time? And, uh, once a condi, I responded that the conditional use permit, once approved, has a year in which to show progress and so on. But they would not be able to occupy, uh, the property, uh, for the intended use until those improvements are made. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve?
Steve, staff has a, uh, a program for checking on those, uh, conditional use type deals to see that, that, that work is done before they move in or it's done in, within that year's time.
Uh, zoning and building services do because they send out inspectors periodically to make sure that the required improvements as shown on their site plan and building plans submitted for the permit approval are being complied with. Uh, the planning office really doesn't have anything more than an informal check, which we do with interns each summer.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, I have a question about sidewalks. I see that we're going to require them to put sidewalk on all four sides of this? Is that what, there's three sides?
There are three sides of public streets. Sidewalks are required and, uh, they would indicate that on their plan.
Okay.
Staff has noted to the applicant that there is a deferral, uh, process that they can go through with Public Works for the installation of sidewalks. When it comes time for those sidewalks to be, uh, when they are needed and when they should be provided, then the applicant has indicated on their plan that they will provide those as needed and will be required to do that.
That would just be my only question. There's no public sidewalk, it appears, within miles of this block.
Right. But if we don't get them to, uh, commit to providing the public sidewalks when needed, we'll never get them.
Okay. But they don't have to have them to open the business?
Not necessarily. Again, they have to go through that deferral, that deferred construction of public sidewalk process with Public Works.
Okay.
Same way with the street. Uh, improvements on Jessica aren't, if they're not needed, they don't have to be provided. But the petition for improvements needs to be in place because not only this property, but other properties back there are served by that unimproved street. If they come forward and want to make their improvements, then we've got at least one petition for improvements in place and then they would also follow suit.
Okay. I, I just want to clarify because you said they can't open their business until they meet the conditions of the use permit, but they can defer through a vari, through a variance process?
Yeah. The public, uh, the public improvements especially because, uh, I mean, they do that all the time. But as far as, uh, the required improvements for occupancy, those have to be done. They have to have hard surfacing for parking. They have to have the landscaping in place, the setbacks, because it is a change in use.
Okay.
I mean, the property's been in that condition for a long time, but now we have an opportunity to make the improvements.
Steve, I have a question. Um, on the, um, under the conditions, the petition for street improvements along North Jessica Avenue, since this property is on the corner and, and faces Benson Road, how far back would you require them to go on Jessica to make the improvements?
Uh, if we could show the site plan again. It doesn't really show access on that side, on their site plan. So as long as a petition for street improvements is, is, uh, provided, but they're not showing access, they don't have to make the improvements.
As long as they're not accessing Jessica, they don't have to make the improvements?
But the petition's in place in case somebody else back in there wants to improve their property, then, okay, now we have all our petitions for improvement, we can go ahead and make those improvements. They would be assessed because they have frontage.
Yeah. That's what I'm, that's what I was wondering.
But they won't be until it's needed.
So a, as long as, as long as there is no egress onto Jessica, then they do not have to do it?
That's my understanding. That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here tonight?
Good evening. I'm Jamie Simcoe, 200 East 10th Street. Uh, I'm an attorney representing the applicant and I can answer any questions you have. Before I do that, I'd like to give you just a little background of the scenario that we're in to clarify why we're asking the questions. Um, my client just purchased the assets of American Equipment Corporation. Part of that includes Drake Trucking. It's currently located out at the Renner exit off of, uh, 29 and, at the Renner exit. They're moving a portion of that business, uh, the, the repair piece of it, uh, hopefully to this Benson Road site. Uh, they currently have budgeted $440,000 to remodel the, um, the building itself. That doesn't include any of the other exterior improvements. That's just the building. Uh, but they're on a tight schedule. They want to be in and doing business, uh, the first part of January because their current lease on the existing site expires at the end of this year. So while we can make decisions about, are we going to use Jessica Avenue? And if we are, then we will get the petition in, um, and we can try to deal with timing of the sidewalks, uh, to coincide with improvements to Jessica, uh, if that's the route that we go. We're concerned about landscaping. Uh, can we really get that done before January 1? And is that really going to hold up this project? Uh, it, it, there are conditions that, uh, we're willing to live with and comply with, but the business needs to keep going. And when my client is coming in and putting in substantial dollars to improve the site, um, and is making a commitment to the area, I'd, I'd hate to see it held up because, uh, we can't get landscaping lined up before, uh, the snow flies.
Jamie, are they prepared to do the hard surfacing between now and January that needs to happen?
Well, I, I mean, they'll make arrangements for it to the best of their ability on the, my understanding in talking with Steve this afternoon is that on the sidewalks, um, there may be a process to defer that. We need to work with city engineering, uh, to, to do that. Part of the remodel would also include whatever improvements they're making to the apron on the property for, for where the parking, uh, will be and, and where the vehicles will travel. And that's, you know, that's a condition to opening business and we understand that piece of it. And that's part of the remodel project, as I understand it. Sidewalks and landscaping, uh, being deferred, I think are the main, the main issues for us.
Thank you.
Jamie, I think it'd be great to get that building up and going again. That's been vacant up there for quite a while.
We're excited about it.
Don't blame you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, could I talk to, uh, staff one more time?
Sure can.
Steve, the issue of landscaping, is that a deal breaker as far as them taking possession up there?
Not that I know of. It's just a matter of procedure. Uh, I know that, uh, the Board of Adjustment does grant variances to allow additional time, especially in winter time conditions.
I'm trying to think back to Sioux Falls College on their football stadium. I know we, uh, did you guys do something internally? They wanted a little more time to get their black topping done?
Right. And that was, uh, in a planned development district, so we had to do that by minor amendment.
So that was a little different.
Uh, to a final development plan that was approved for those situations. Here, uh, we don't really have a plan to approve. I mean, they haven't finished their plan yet, so I can't, I don't know. I guess, uh, I guess the planning commission could provide a stipulation of approval that would allow them until next year to complete that, but you would have to put in a specified time. You'd have to say it has to be completed by June and it has to be completed by July.
If we approve the plan, does this then also have to go to council for approval?
No. Uh, conditional use.
Okay. So that could expedite that a little bit as far as...
It would help. Otherwise, they have to go to the Board of Adjustment for variance.
If we approve it, that becomes approved immediately? Or is there a waiting period yet for somebody to, uh...
Uh, no. The only waiting period is for them to get through their plan check on a set of plans that shows all of the improvements. But with your condition for approval, allowing, uh, them to defer, say, landscaping improvements until, uh, June or July, then that would be okay.
You're going to get same issues with asphalt.
And same thing with asphalt, sure. But asphalt...
Running out of time with that.
Yeah. Well, that's your call.
Well, usually they'll shut, you know, depending on weather. It seems like November they'll shut the hot points off.
Yeah. Generally, for this item and all these conditional uses that we had at the end, you had some neighbors get up and bring up similar questions and concerns about the church. And Kenny's raising the questions. We have very intelligent people that have dealt with this for 10 years. The issue is, those neighbors got up and said, do not let these people get in this structure because once you do, they will never leave. Now this person's getting up and saying, let me in the structure and trust me, I'll get these things taken care of. We generally always say, let them go. That's fine. They'll work it out. They'll plant their trees, they'll put in their landscaping, they'll put their sidewalks in because they're going to get it done. And you all know, we bring revocations before this board all the time because they don't always do what they promise. So that's the issue, Kenny and the board, is if they don't put in their trees, if they don't hard surface and they've operated in, in this structure and they've put in substantial money, we're going to be standing up in front of this board on these conditional uses tonight. Not specifically this one, but the other ones, saying, okay, are you guys ready to shut down this business because they didn't plant their trees and they never went through? And then you're going to be looking at me going, Jeff, how did they get this far? And we'll turn back and go, you remember when you said that it's getting towards the end of the construction season, we should just let them go?
Well, I think I was hearing two things. I think I was hearing, A, they've got a year and B, they, that it would have to be done before they could literally move in.
No, they can usually move in. We let them occupy the structures and start getting their stuff up and going. But then what happens is, just like we did with Dale Osen at that, last month, what happens in that one year? In one year, we're back in front of you again. Then what do you do when, well, we're kinda close? What are you going to do in six months, a year, two years, five years?
You know, Jeff, to me, the difference from the last item to this item is...
Oh, they're all different. Yeah.
Right. I mean, this item, we have a plan. We have a list of stipulations that you guys generated.
Yep.
The last item, we had our red line sketch up on the board, no stipulations.
And that's why we put all the conditionals together on the agenda because they're just conditions. And I was just raising the point because I knew Kenny was going to want to know.
I'll, I'll, uh, let me weigh in on this schedule thing. Kenny's right, they do typically make asphalt until sometime in November and they plant trees until sometime in November. So there's really two months of building potentially left. And so what about the planning process would take so long that you'd run out of time to plant trees or grade that parking lot?
I, I guess I don't know. If, if the conditional use permit gets issued tonight, the transaction closes next week and we start moving. Um, I just would hate to get to a point where we get to, uh, where we get to, to, to January and we're ready to do business and we haven't been able to. I don't know. I don't know how busy contractors are this time of year. I, I just don't have the answers to those questions right now.
Some are busy and some aren't, I suspect. But I think it, I may ask this of staff, if we approve this, uh, in, with the assumption that, uh, this work would get done, uh, right away and, uh, this applicant, we had snowstorm the first of November, the plant shut down, came back and said, we did everything we could, but we couldn't get it done. Uh, I mean, what, what we're looking at isn't, uh, should not be a huge engineering project and a construction project to undertake and complete in two months.
Kim Chutter, uh, who's the business owner, has come up and, I know you guys like to hear from the business owner, so I'll let him talk a little.
Thanks. Good evening. Kim Chutter from Huron. Uh, we're a fabrication company from Huron, uh, family owned deal and, uh, we, we've been growing rather quickly and we were seeking another opportunity to expand our product line. Uh, we were brought aware of the AC, AEC business, that manufactures snow plows and snow blowers. Uh, it was somewhat of a failed business and time was of essence and we stepped in and did an asset purchase on that and we're currently managing that from Huron. Uh, we realized that we did not want to continue to be in that building out there because it was leased, uh, basically wasn't available. And, uh, the manufacturing part, we will eventually move back to Huron when time allows. But, uh, the Drake Truck part of the deal, that needs to stay in Sioux Falls. So this was sprung on us rather quickly. We closed on this approximately two weeks ago and we've been moving really quickly to do this and became aware of the Vaughn Trucking building, uh, viewed it, made a decision fairly quick to make an offer on it. Uh, we've been expediting things as quickly as possible. Uh, the, the building isn't in, in, you know, you couldn't move into it today. The roof, the roof leaks in numerous, numerous places with large rust spots, uh, almost unsafe to walk on, on top, forget about inhabit. And, uh, quite frankly, I can't, I can't even secure anybody, I haven't secured anybody to put the roof on yet, forget about do anything else to make it inhabitable. And, uh, it, it would be extremely poor business to move into it with the leak, the roof leaking as badly as it is. Uh, I'm, I'm really hard pressed just to get a roof on it and I, I've been, you know, desperately seeking a contractor and this time of the year, most contractors are busy. Uh, I've got a good lead on a couple of them, but I haven't even secured anybody to put the roof on. I anticipate doing this in the next couple of days. I've got some bids, but these people, they're busy and they're talking November 1 to get my roof on. So when somebody's talking, plant trees, I'm going, whoa. We're talking about planting trees and I, I don't even have a roof in this building yet to even think about inhabiting it. And then we plan on totally gutting it and, uh, re-insulating it with new offices. Uh, I mean, wow. And, and we're talking about planting trees. So I don't know what to do on that. I really don't. I'm, I'm at a loss. Do I postpone this whole thing for a while so I don't have to do this, so I can do what I need to do first? I'm kinda asking for your, your understanding on this due to the time of the year. I, you know, I, I plan on making this an attractive building and, and, that's just hearsay. I understand that, but...
Well, I think what's going to happen here, if we pass it, will be that this, this plan ends up looking like this. I think the general feeling I'm getting here, if you get caught in the weather as far as getting the parking lot and the trees planted, it better happen next spring. I mean, there, there'll be a procedure where somebody's going to come around and say it better look like the plan. If not, then it comes back to us again.
I'm willing to do that, but I kinda need a roof before I plant trees.
I understand.
You know? I can't even begin to inhabit it without a fixed roof and, and I'm hoping that if I can get the roof before snow flies, that, you know, I got the ability to work inside in the winter.
No, we're glad you moved down here.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
You like Sioux Falls.
Kim, would you be comfortable if we added a fourth stipulation that basically clarified a one-year review process back to the, the plan for conformance?
Say that again, please.
If we added a stipulation for approval tonight that basically said, we would come back in one year just to see how you've done to this plan, if you've been able to get...
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions for Kim? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to address, uh, item 34 before we take action? Okay. Commission action.
I will move for approval of item 34, adding a fourth stipulation that we add a one-year review, uh, for conformance to this conditional use plan as presented this evening.
Okay. We have a motion with four stipulations.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. Any discussion?
Meredith, um, in, um, I guess referring back to what Jeff had said just a moment ago, I, I guess I would feel a little bit more comfortable. At first I thought maybe a six-month review, but Anita's right, it would still be winter. I mean, it would be March. I, I guess I don't feel... feel like, I don't feel that we should let it go for a whole year. I would feel more comfortable with nine months, with a nine-month review.
I would agree with that.
I think a year is just a little too long.
Okay.
Would you be willing to amend your motion?
Procedurally, if you'll let me do that, Meredith, I will revise it to a nine-month review.
Sure.
As the fourth stipulation.
Is there any other discussion regarding the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Item thirty-four is approved with the four stipulations. Item thirty-five has been withdrawn. Item thirty-six is adjournment. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A second?
All those in favor, aye.